The Mayor and Council Meeting of January 6, 2020 is now in session. Y'all would stand with me and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you. Father, we thank you for all of the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. God, we thank you for the blessings of the past year. Lord, we thank you for the blessings of the future year of the opportunities that you'll lay before us. God, we thank you for our country. God, we ask you to bless and continue your provision and protection upon our country. God, we thank you for this mayor and city council, and as they begin a new term and new administration, God, we ask you to lead them, guide them, grant them wisdom and understanding for every decision before them. God, we just lift these things up to you. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. Jim is our Finance Director and always willing to help us out. Okay, our first order of business is to get our Councilman, Mr. Jim Waters, sworn in, and we're so delighted to have Judge Edie Haney here to do that for us. of the time with us, but feel free to go when you're ready. First, I want to welcome everybody, and it's so good to see all of you here. I appreciate you coming out this evening. We have some recognitions we're going to do, which we're always happy to do, and I want to wish you all a Happy New Year. Thank you for those who attended our function last Thursday night. The turnout was just overwhelming, and we really do appreciate it. So our next item of business is our citizens' comments. If you'd like to make a comment, there's a sheet that you sign in on. So do we have anybody that would like to make a comment? Commissioner Morgan?
Happy New Year. I'm very excited to be back to welcome the three new members of the City Council, and I look forward to working with you in 2020 as Chairman of Carroll County.
And we look forward to working with you. I think together, we're going to make this even better. It's hard to be better when you're the best, but thank you, Michelle. Is there any other citizens' comment? Yes, sir. Okay, if you'll come up to the mic and state your name.
Question is concerning this yellow flashing arrow on the red light. You know, here I am, got the green light, and then the car comes, almost hit me because he got the yellow flashing light, you know? So who got the right of way? Do I have a...I mean, I got the green light there. But the yellow, got the yellow flashing light, just, and he blows at me, you know, give me a real hard look, you know, like...
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I just want to come in on that.
Okay, all right.
Oh, that's a new design from DOT. It's not something the city dreamed up, and I think you...did you say shady?
(inaudible).
Okay, well, oh...
That's where it lives, Jim. That's not where the law is.
Okay. Well, nevertheless, it's just a new design from DOT, and what it means, if it's a flashing yellow, you can turn if there's nothing coming. They're confusing to me. Oh, I think it's something everybody's having a hard time getting used to, but it's something new that the state came up with. It's not something that we came up with. But if you've got a green arrow, you've got the right of way, or if you've got a green light, you've got the right of way. If it's flashing yellow, it means you can turn, but not if something's coming. You may turn, but you don't have the right of way.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Are there any other citizens' comments? Mr. Morehead, would you come up to the...oh, I'm sorry. That item was removed from the agenda for tonight. I think it's actually, Mr. Morehead has actually withdrawn his application. Any other citizens' comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes of the December 2, 2019 minutes. You all have a copy of that? Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
A move that we accept the minutes.
Okay, we have a move? I'm sorry.
(inaudible) for the rezoning, so if the rezoning did not deny, we could do this list, but we didn't get the notice.
Mr. Morehead withdrew his application for the rezoning.
Oh.
Yes, if you're here for the rezoning...
We all made our work together.[825.16][825.16](laughter)
All right, we have a motion on the floor for...to adopt the minutes from the December meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion carries. Okay, we'll have our mayor and council announcements and comments, and I'll save mine until the end. Would any of you council members like to make any comments? All right, we have the city manager's announcement at this time.
Again, I just want to thank all the departments for a great year, the great job that they've done. I want to particularly recognize our public safety people. It's been...there've been a few challenges around the city over the last few weeks, and they've done a great job, and I just want to thank you all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Rizer. Okay, if I can have a motion for the approval of the agenda items for consideration with one item change. We have the Carver High Proclamation. We'll move that to item number one, and then the numbers after that would just follow. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda items for consideration with that change?
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda item for that change.
You have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Okay, we have a proclamation for the George Washington Carver High School. And for those who are not familiar with this, this was a high school that was located here in Carrollton, and it was incorporated in, and we now have the Carrollton City School System with schools for everyone. And I will read this. "We honor the surviving former Principal Dr. Charles E. Wiltson and the memory of his predecessor, Mr. L. S. Mallett, and others surviving former education, former students, and descendants of the students of George Washington Carver High School. Whereas George Washington Carver High School was opened in Carrollton, Georgia on Alabama Street 65 years ago this September, five months after the historic signing of the Brown versus Board of Education Supreme Court decision that outlawed segregation in all the nation's public school. And whereas George Washington Carver High School was built by the state as part of its strategy to continue operating its public schools under the court's prior decision in Plessy versus Ferguson, which legitimized the doctrine and the practice of separate but equal. And whereas George Washington Carver High School, a consolidated segregated school, served all African-American high school students from the city and unincorporated areas of Carrollton, as well as the towns throughout Carroll County, which included Bowden, Bowden Junction, Clem, Rootville, Temple, Billerica, and Whitesburg. And the old Carver High School building remains on Alabama Street to this day. And whereas, in the tumultuous days of the dawning of the Civil Rights Movement, under the leadership and watchful eye of Principal L. S. Mallett, his highly qualified and professional faculty and a highly attentive and proficient staff, the African-American students of Carroll County found at the George Washington Carver High School a place of refuge where they did learn, grow, form lifelong relationships. Many high schools' sweethearts are now enjoying the bountiful harvest of children and grandchildren, which comes with a well-tended marriage. And whereas the students of George Washington Carver High School excelled academically and athletically, most of the students went on to lead productive and successful lives and contributed to their communities in the capacity of elected officials, entrepreneurs, pastors, public safety officers, teachers, and professionals in fields such as agriculture, business, entertainment, law, medical, and health care, and sports. Most of the males and some of the female students also served their country in various branches of the military service, where many of them attained significant rank and honor. And whereas George Washington Carver High School has many claims to fame, two of the most noteworthy are in its first school year, Carver High School became the first high school in the country to win a state football championship. Go Jackets! And Carver High lays claim to the legacy of the 1952 Olympic gold medallist Catherine Hardy Lavender, who graduated from Carrollton High...I mean, from Carver High School, Forerunner School, Carroll County Training School in 1946. Now, therefore, this being the 65th anniversary year of the first graduating class of George Washington Carver High School, the class of 1955, although its purpose was intended for evil, the Lord made it into good, and we are hereby designated 2020 as George Washington Carver High School Year, and encourage all the citizens to give all the due praise and honor to the surviving members of the Carver High School faculty, alumni, staff, and parents through this year. Do we have any of the Carver High School faculty, staff, graduates, attendees here tonight? Okay, all right, well, let's give them an applause.[1257.16][1257.16](applause) Thank you all for coming. We will get this signed. Thank you very much. Okay, all right, we'll stand, and if y'all want to come up front and stand with us, you'll get to stick your name.
To this mound, on three. One, two, and three. Thank you so much.
Can you hold this one? One more second. You get one more.
(laughter)
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, our next agenda item is the appointment of the mayor pro temp. All right, we have a motion and a second. If there are any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion approved. Thank you, Mr. Waters, for agreeing to serve. And now it's my honor and privilege to present two recognitions tonight for appreciation. The first one I'm going to present is to Met Lane, who was a councilman here and served from 2016 to 2019, and he chose not to seek reelection because he has other aspirations. Mr. Lane has been very instrumental in a lot of projects here in the city, and I'm sure he's not going to go away, and we can still have his knowledge and input. So the plaque reads, "Presented to Met Lane in grateful appreciation for serving the city of Carrollton and its citizens as councilman from 2016 to 2019." Walt Hollinsworth. He also served the city from 2016 to 2019. We appreciate his contributions to the city as mayor. Mr. Hollinsworth, his family's been here for a long, long time and a very vital part of this community. And this reads, "Presented to Walt Hollinsworth in grateful appreciation for serving the city of Carrollton and its citizens as mayor, 2016 through 2019." Well, this has been a...this is a night for recognition. Our first responders make calls every day. You know, sometimes I get just really tickled at...you see these little cartoons of firemen, and what you normally see is the cat up in the tree and the fireman getting the cat out of the tree. Well, I'll share a little story with you. It's about 22 years of probate court, Judge. Most people thought all I did was issue marriage license and firearms license, now known as weapons carries permit. So one day in court, this lady came in, and we were there, and we started, and she said, "Well, I didn't know I was coming to court. I didn't know that's what this was for." And I thought, mm, what part of probate court did you not understand? But anyway, when I think of first responders and firemen and policemen and EMS people, I think of something tragic happening, and they're there, and that is the great thing. And I cannot say enough about our first responders. I think we have the best departments in the state of Georgia, and I'll put our guys up against anybody. So tonight, we are here to honor three of our firemen, and this is the Hero Award. And we'll start with firefighting. And we'll start with firefighter Jimmy Athelby, and we have firefighter Jared McKenzie, and we have firefighter Chad Digpen. And we're honoring these three firemen tonight with the Hero Award. Whereas on November 22, 2019, fire engine number 24 responded to a three-year-old who was choking. Upon the arrival, they were met by a frantic mother running towards them carrying her unresponsive three-year-old little girl. She was unconscious, not breathing, and her skin had begun to turn purple. The mother handed the little girl over to the firefighters for emergency medical care, and the firefighters immediately began maneuvers to clear her airway. The emergency measures were successful. The child regained consciousness and began to breathe on her own. Whereas, the child was within seconds of death, and without the intervention of the firefighters, the child would have not survived. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Carrollton welcome this opportunity to recognize these firefighters for your dedicated service to the citizens of Carrollton and present you with this Hero's Award. In witness thereof, I have there, here to, set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Carrollton to be affixed the sixth day of January 2020. So, I'm going to ask these three young men to come forward, and also Chief Bearden, and we'll present you with this Hero Award.
they're dedicated to serving people. We respond every day, just like the mayor said, the people, and the outcome's not always this good. So, I think it's very important that we recognize the people that, without a shadow of a doubt, saved someone's life. And I'm very, very proud of y'all. Thank you for dedication and the wonderful job that you do.
Okay, our next item of business is Resolution 1-2020, Mayor and Council Agenda and 2020 Mayor and Council Meeting Schedule.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The resolution before you will set the dates for the upcoming mayor and council meetings, and also the dates for a monthly work session. This is something that we discussed amongst ourselves, and something that I know that you wanted to see done, so that these actual council, mayor and council meetings would flow better. So, you have before you those schedules. Normally, a mayor and council meeting will fall on the first Monday of the month. Sometimes those Mondays are holidays, and so this makes adjustment for that. And then, we wanted to have mid-month a work session, and we wanted it to fall after the planning and zoning meeting. That way, you would get to hear all the information you might need about an upcoming zoning meeting that you were going to vote for in two weeks. In order for us to react to what will come out of that work session, we are, a part of this resolution allows us to send out the agenda the Friday before the actual mayor and council meeting. So, those are the changes in a nutshell. Thank you.
Okay. Y'all have a copy of that, read it. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
Yeah, I move that we adopt Resolution 01-2020, Mayor and Council Agenda Meeting Schedule Changes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any comments or questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is board appointment for the Arts Commission.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Arts Commission has a vacancy due to the resignation of Michael Kenny, whose term is effective through June 30, 2020. The Arts Commission met, and they recommend the appointment of Andrea Stone to fill this vacancy. Andrea has been a strong advocate for the arts. She's very involved at the Arts Center already, and we think she would be an asset to the commission. If appointed, her term would commence immediately, and she would complete Mr. Kenny's term, and then you would be, basically, you would be able to reappoint her in June.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Studdard. I'm sorry, that was April Studdard.
I'll play it.
Okay, we have a nomination for the position on the Arts Commission. Do I have a motion to appoint Andrea Stone to fill the unexpired term of Michael Kenny?
I'll make a motion that we, Andrea Stone, the senator for the Art Commission.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'd second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the board appointment by Main Street.
We have three Main Street board members whose terms expired at the end of 2019. Faith Mallory Wright is currently the board president, and she is eligible for reappointment. Ash Edwards is also eligible for reappointment. He was originally appointed in March 2019 to fill an unexpired term. And then, we also have Melanie Drew, who does not wish to be reappointed. The Main Street Board met, and they recommend filling Melanie's slot with Stephanie Lister. Stephanie's a Carrollton resident, and she also owns multiple downtown restaurants, and she's heavily invested in the revitalization of this area, and she'll be an asset to Carrollton and to the downtown. If appointed, these members would serve through November 30, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Studdard. Okay, we have nominations for the Main Street Board and reappointment of the, some of the existing members that are eligible for reappointment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we keep Faith Mallory and Ash Edwards on the Main Street Board, and we put Stephanie Lister in for Melanie Drew.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried. Okay, Ms. Studdard, we have the Planning Commission Board Appointments.
We have five members of the Planning Commission who are, who need to be either reappointed or appointed. We have four whose terms have expired at the end of 2019, and then we had one member who had to resign due to work and personal commitments. Joe Neal is the vice chair, and he was originally appointed in 2008. Casey Vance was appointed in 2011. Steve Moore was appointed in 2017, and Bo Bass was appointed in 2017. All four of these gentlemen have expressed an interest to continue to serve. They've been assets to the Planning Commission. They've had good attendance, and they've been very participatory in the planning and zoning process. Kara Herzog, as I mentioned, had to resign, and the, at this time, we would ask that you would appoint a new member to the Planning Commission.
Do we have any nominations for someone to serve in Ms. Herzog's position?
I'd like, like to nominate Eddie Duffy for a position on the Planning Commission.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried. Okay, well, that concludes all of our agenda items. I would like to say I appreciate all the people that serve on our boards and commissions, because sometimes that's a thankless job, and you take a lot of harassment, and you're not very popular sometimes with the decisions you make. So, I do want to express my gratitude to all of those who serve. And again, I want to thank our city staff for helping all of us with this three, well, I still consider Brett new, three of us transitioning. They have been so awesome in helping us get acclimated to where we are and where we need to be, and they have just gone out of their way to be helpful, and we appreciate that so, so much. I went down to Haley's office this afternoon, and I said, "Haley, it's like I've never been to a council meeting before." I mean, I went for 18 years, so, but got those little jitters, and she was so helpful, and I do appreciate, our staff, all of our staff does a wonderful job, and we do appreciate that. All right, is there any other items? Okay, Mr. Waters?
Oh, I missed my turn earlier, but I just want to say I really do look forward to working with, with all of you guys. I don't know where Gerald is tonight. Hopefully, he'll be back next month, but I think we got a good team up here, and obviously, good, good city staff. So, Matt, you left us in, in good hands up here, I believe, so thanks for your service as well. But just want to say, I appreciate Tina and Osama, he's still here, he moved seats, for coming tonight. Appreciate all you guys do, and I hope you'll stay involved in the city stuff. They both ran really, really good races, and also, just want to say thanks to my mom and my, look at her, she tends to, there's only one person that likes giving speeches less than me, and that's probably my mom. But anyway, she showed up tonight for my picture getting made, and so did my, my aunt, Aunt Jenny. So, good to see you guys.
And we have Mr. Chuck Connolly, who just kind of sits over there quietly and doesn't say anything, and we just really appreciate his support, and he's always there if we have a question.
The, the less I say, the better.
Yeah. Probably the less you say, the more money we say.
Well, there you go.
I'm learning, I'm learning from Tim. Okay, all right. Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion?
Just want to say, great job on your first mayor and council meeting.
Thank you.
Look forward to the future.
All in favor of the adjournment motion, raise your right hand.